Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Joe Russo. I'm one of the candidates for city council District A. I believe the most important thing in this election is about neighbors and neighborhoods and putting them first. I am running on talking about the things that I feel like all of our neighbors are talking about, which is crime, economic development, streets and infrastructure. I have a strong background in philanthropic work, and I believe that work, particularly working at the neighborhood grassroots level lends itself to collaborate with others and I look forward to working with everybody.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dan Ring, number 61 on the ballot. Born and raised in Boston, moved here about 10 years ago. And my motivation for running is I'm a community leader. I've done community programs throughout the country, actually, and I'd really like to kind of step up my game and get involved in the political process even more to help this district and help the city. So that's my motivation for running. I'm a community guy. My whole platform is based on community processes that have worked in other areas, and I believe we can, while keeping the same New Orleans feel to it, we can get these programs up and running in the city. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tillman Hardy. I was born in Montgomery, Alabama, raised in Atlanta, Georgia. I arrived in New Orleans in 1999. I've worked at the city level, the federal level, with the Corps of Engineers, the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority, nonprofit sector with the Preservation Resource Center, all of that before Hurricane Katrina. After Hurricane Katrina, I moved over to Pigeon Town, and I began working in the for-profit sector as a developer and started a nonprofit for sustainability and been working on reviving a community center over the last 10 years. I am running because I believe I can make a difference. I've been involved in community work, including workforce development with our young people for the last seven years through our nonprofit. And I understand a lot of different aspects of the community that I believe other candidates might not. And so I hope to deliver in bringing people together and bridging the many gaps that we have in our district. Thank you. Number 60 on the ballot.
Good evening. My name is Toya Washington Kendrick. I am a candidate for city council District A. I am a native New Orlean. I've been in the military for seven years. Upon my return, I'm married, the love of my life. We've been married for 23 years. We have two kids. I'm an educator, been in education for 20 years. My whole platform is change. Change need to start now, and it's a sense of urgency. So I want to be that buffer between the community and the local government to impart that change that we so desperately need. I'm number 63 on the ballot. Thank you.
My name's Drew Ward, resident here in Carrollton. I am originally from Alexandria, in the center of the state. I moved here after the Army in 2003 and always wanted to live here. Also needed a place to have school, so it was convenient. And since then, have been involved in various community efforts here in Carrollton and across the city. Deal with things with parks, with water management, with infrastructure. I spent about six or seven years trying to stay at the Carrollton courthouse, and we actually did pull it off, and unfortunately, politics played to still make it get sold. But mainly, I believe that, as a person who professionally works around the world as a problem solver, I look at New Orleans and I see lots of problems, see solutions. But mainly, both in the various community actions we've done around the area and things I've been involved in, and just looking at the things that are obviously on the paper here, I believe that we have the capacity to fix our problems here. We have the intellectual capital. We have the revenues we need. We have the materials we need, and more importantly, we have the people we need. And I have seen far too many instances where the people of our community came together and they had the answer, they had the willingness, they had the solution, and unfortunately, the people who are running the city just had no interest in them. And I'd like to see that change.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eileen Achacollin McClansky, and I live not too far from here in Uptown, New Orleans, where I've lived most of my adult life. And I'm running for city council because I have two kids, and I want them to be able to establish their life here and stay in New Orleans, just like many of you have kids and grandkids, and you want them to be able to stay and live near you. I'm an attorney, and I have spent most of my career in public service. I started at Ben Franklin High School, and I went to George Washington University and Tulane Law, where I studied environmental law. I've been the trusted aide of senior defense officials. I was an intelligence analyst at the Department of Defense. I was also an aide to Senator Mary Landry in Washington, DC. I've worked for judges and council members. The last three and a half years, I worked for the people of District C and the people of New Orleans and helped them get through the bureaucracy and the red tape that is the city of New Orleans. That is what your city council member is there to do, be your voice, help you get through processes, help you get things done. I don't care who your lobbyist is, or if you donated to my campaign or not, what I want to do is solve the problems for the people of New Orleans. And every day, I have seen people coming in crying, trying to open their businesses, trying to get their sewage and water board bill fixed, and just not getting the answers. And I, that impels me to run because I want to be the person who can solve those problems for you. I have the experience in the city government and as well as the federal government and the judiciary to take all of these ideas that have been talked about on the campaign trail and actually put them into the action. So I hope that you will consider me. I'm number 58 on the ballot, and I'd be honored to represent you on the council.
The consent decree that the federal monitors use to provide oversight of New Orleans Police Department is going to expire during this count, during your council term. Do you support maintaining its provisions, and specifically with reference to off-duty details by officers, stop and frisk policies, body cameras, and immigration issues? Thanks a lot. And Mr. President?
So, the reason why it's getting ready to expire, if I understand it correctly, is because we've made material progress on a number of different portions of it, and I support keeping many of those portions in place. You didn't ask about this one, but one of the ones I consider to be the most important is that the consent decree is responsible for preventing us from hiring officers on NOPD who should not have been hired. And so I want to make sure that type of provision is maintained in place. With regard to the immigration policy, I believe the piece that is in the consent decree should remain. With regard to off-duty police, it was characterized as being aorta of corruption by the Department of Justice when we first got here, so I certainly think it's important that we maintain the necessary prophylactic measures in place. Body cameras, yes, I think you ought to maintain those. And when it comes to stop and frisk, anything that violates the Constitution of the United States, we should, I would support.
So I was a consent decree. I believe we really need to let it expire. We really need to run our city on our own. We don't need federal monitors. We need more action at the management level, at the police. I think we need to get a new administration into the police department. As far as stop and frisk, stop and frisk is really just glorified racial profiling. We need any program like that not to be encouraged. My community policing involvement around the country leads me to believe as long as we get these guys and girls out of the car into the neighborhoods, we don't need all these decrees. We can do it, we can do it by community policing. We can do it by just interacting with the neighbors and the children. And so as far as the decree, I think we need to end the decree, and we need to work on, body cameras are a safety issue, and going forward, I think the decree is something we should end.
Simply, yes, I believe we should keep all of the provisions, and we should expand on those things and start to focus more on community policing. I believe that having the oversight is extremely important at this time, as we are still having a lot of critical issues. Asking, talking about stop and frisk, I'm really emotional because I got a call from my son yesterday saying that the police actually came to his house in a different district and questioned him, asked him to step out of the house, questioned him, and not only did it once, but after they found out that his parents were not home and didn't give him an opportunity to contact his parents, they left, they actually came back an hour later and did it again. He was nervous and scared, and so was my daughter, who was also outside watching this whole thing take place. We desperately need to continue the oversight and all of the parameters of the consent decree. Thank you.
Hi. I would get rid of this consent decree. It's a whole lot of money that we can use and allocate for other things. That's one. The body cameras I will keep because it's a safety issue for both parties, for the person who's being stopped and also for the police officer. The money issue with the overtime, I would not allow that to happen either, because those people are working those details, but they still have to give a portion of their funds back to the police department for the overseers. So I don't think that's fair at all. And totally, in layman's terms, I would get rid of it. Now, they have another aspect of it where you can just meet and greet. So when the police go out to different neighborhoods, they have these little cars that they can actually get to know the person that they're talking to, and they just collect information. So with those cars, if anything else happens, or they need to know something, they can use those cars.
So it's important to keep in mind a consent decree. It sounds very nice and pleasant, a consent decree. Now, a consent decree, it's clear what it is. It's a last-ditch effort when someone's suing you to beg them not to keep suing you. And so the consent decree is here because we really, really messed up in a lot of ways, and we're continuing to mess up, year after year after year. If NOPD were truly following the letter of the consent decree and were truly doing the right thing, they wouldn't care about having a consent decree, and they wouldn't be asking to get rid of it. So there's your question to ask. If you're doing the right thing, why do you not need it on paper? And so obviously, they're not doing the right thing. As far as the body cameras, we need to expand it, and also we need to make them mandatory. Right now, they're not. Off-duty things, I'm not very big fan of this. I know that off-duty details are good, but I don't like that neighborhoods like Mid-City and all pay money for off-duty NOPD to come do NOPD's job.
The consent decree was put in place for a reason, because there were, you know, many years of unconstitutional policing going on, and so now we have had some great progress. And yesterday was Go Blue Day, which was a day to support our police. And I spent some time going to the districts in District A, Second District and Third District, speaking with the commanders and finding out, you know, where they are, what their needs are, and how they view the consent decree. And they've gotten to a level of comfort where I think that you're going to be seeing, you know, a lot more proactive policing. They're putting people on task force, and I think you're going to see some results from that. As far as putting in place and interordnance or other measures, I think that there are some good policies that we could definitely benefit from, certainly body cameras. We want to make sure that all of the procedures are constitutional. And Office of Secondary Employment is certainly an issue that we need to look at, as well as making sure that, you know, everything that we're doing is in line with, you know, what the Constitution requires. Is there any other issue that I could... I guess I can. Oh, and immigration? Well, I think that we should not be a tool of, you know, ICE or anything like that to carry out federal policies where our own local policing is more important.
So, we continue to see average numbers of inmates beyond the new jail's functional capacity. And more importantly, numbers that are, you know, out of proportion for a city this size compared to national averages. What do you think should be done, if anything, to shrink the local incarceration rate? And do you believe that our bail system has any role in the incarceration rate?
The jails are basically out of control right now. What we need to do is we need to get the sheriff's office to quit incarcerating low-level offenders, minor offenders. They're taking up space that we really need for violent offenders. The process, the process that they go through is a lengthy one. The bond process is basically discriminatory against poor people. If you're poor, sometimes you'll spend a lot more time in jail than necessary. And bottom line is, you know, the sheriff's department just isn't doing a good job of, you know, maintaining that jail. Suicides, murders, et cetera. It's really, we need a top-down analysis to see where the system is breaking, where we can mitigate those issues. But as far as the jails, you know, we can't continue this, you know, this school the jail pipeline that's been going on.
I believe that as a city, we have to start looking to be a leader in something. And we are falling behind in terms of mass incarceration. We are jailing people for traffic violations, even though for years now, we've had on the books that police officers don't have to arrest people who have outstanding traffic tickets. People are still going to jail for traffic tickets. And I think that that is taking too many officers off of the streets where they could be working on violent crimes. Also, the jail itself, the sheriff's department, has invested time and money in providing more resources for incarcerated individuals. I know that they're actually doing yoga. I know that they are working on other types of ways of sustaining themselves and learning how to do so after incarceration, and I welcome that.
I think part of the problem is we haven't got to what really causes all the problems, which is systemic problems. So once we do that, I think through education, everything can work out. But we don't even bother with the aspect of educating people about different aspects of what happens in the city. Also, with the police department, it's not a fine line. It's too general, or some people might decide, okay, I'm not going to arrest this person for this, because they have that autonomy to do that. So with that being said, I really think that the system should be revised to be more specific in what they're going to do, and do it across the board, so they can have a level playing field for everybody.
We've got to be the only major city, I think, that actually takes and puts on their front doorstep as a welcome mat a giant prison. We keep calling it a jail because we replaced OPB, but it's still a prison. And I still believe that cities have no business owning prisons or having prisons. We just had a kind of a circus play out in city council where they pretended to decide to build a third building, even though for the past seven years, we've been looking at two bridges going to the missing third buildings, which we always knew was coming. And the fact is, it's all about the money, and it's about money not just as far as the money going into the prison, it's about money as far as the bail bonds. We finally had some actual media coverage and some criminal action against some of these really corrupt situations where you have bail bonds, companies actually being owned by judges and such. And it's an absurd system that's existed here for decades, and it's another one of the parts of government that needs an entire rewrite, top to bottom. So yeah, part of the problem is our bonding and bail system. Part of the problem is just the ineptitude of everyone who runs the jail, the jail itself. And another part of it is that there's not a motivation to actually not run this jail. It's a huge part of government. There's a lot of contracts, a lot of good campaign donors who get paid out of that. And the fact is, though, that that's not the role setting. It's not good for criminal justice, and it doesn't help anybody not become a criminal or reform themselves. And that's what we should be focusing on.
Again, we have a situation of another consent decree, and that was put in place to make sure that we have a constitutional jail. So a lot of the money that we're spending, that the city is spending on the jail is by order of a federal judge. I think that, you know, there have been major steps to reduce incarceration rates, and that those steps need to be continued. There is a lot of work going on on the bail reform. Working group has been formed. I believe Judge Calvin Johnson has had that working group. And there's been ordinances introduced, and that debate, I think that you all should, you know, keep informed on that debate, because, you know, we're up here and we may not take office until May of next year, but that is an issue that should be decided soon. And what, we can't be putting poor people in jail and holding them there because they can't afford to pay.
Well, I think the first thing to remember is our jail size has drastically increased, so you need to credit the policies that have been implemented for seeing that. Part of Charles's question was, what are those policies that have been good, and what should we continue in that regard? And I think first of all, we've seen summonses being issued now for small offenses like possession of marijuana. People who have something like that shouldn't be going to jail, being next to somebody who's a hard, violent criminal. One of the other recent steps that the city council just took was the ability to issue summonses for lower lying offenses for juveniles as well. I think there's 10 or 11 of those that were changed into the specter. So the idea that we are going to focus on violent crime, offenders with guns, is one thing, but focusing on people who have either drug issues, or have simple possession issues, or frankly, are not a threat to us, is not what we should be focused on, not where we should put our time management.
Thank you, guys, for those questions. First, so what kind of questions do you ask in terms of this budget? Now, this bigger budget with fewer officers, in terms of accountability first. Secondly, how do you demand and advocate for responsible response times? And how do you negotiate with the mayor and the police chief in this budget in terms of appropriation for manpower and labor in the districts that represent your district? Nice, easy, sir.
I believe that, in terms of accountability, I believe that we should be accountable to our citizens for making our city safer. At the end of the day, all of the different matrices that the police department uses to determine how effective it is, how many arrests it has, you know, in some cases, how many new programs exist, are not effectively touching our bottom line, which is, are we a safer city? Yes or no? I don't believe we are. And I believe that we need to focus more on making sure that our city is safer. Response times and having appropriate manpower, the reason that we don't have good response times and appropriate manpower is because we waste a lot of money on things that don't relate to making our city safer. Thank you.
I think the first thing is, we should have been asking the questions, like you've just mentioned. Why is it a larger budget with fewer police officers? Why can't we make that work? Because in the past, we had more police officers and not such a large budget. So that is a question I think that we should be asking, but according to the charter, we should be demanding that those questions be answered. So as city council representatives, we are charged with demanding that we get these things done in a proficient and efficient manner. But if we're not asking the questions and we just a-man and everything that's put down before us, that is an issue. And for the past almost seven years now, we've been, as the council, we've been a-man and everything that comes down.
It doesn't really matter what powers the council has, the powers the council chooses not to exercise them. And that's the issue we have here. So one of the questions would be, what would you ask questions of the budget? Well, I wouldn't ask any questions, because I wouldn't allow a mayor to write on the budget and then have us react to it. That's not the way it works. The mayor is the executive. He's supposed to execute what the people of the city desire and if they ask for it through their council. The mayor is not a fief to himself. He's not a despot or a plume. That's an opinion thing I might agree with there. But the fact is, though, you're letting people to legislate and to run your city and to make sure that no one has all control of everything, that no one gets to just decide not to follow the law. We don't have a city government on point or set, and we have 10 floors of lawyers trying to figure out how not to follow the law, and then how to get away with it by not answering records requests. It's nonsense. It's a lot of money, and it doesn't make any sense. The fact is, though, the reason that they can get away with it is because your council allows it. The responsibility is first and foremost with your district council person, and then with that large one. And that should always be right away the accountability.
Well, actually, the budget hearings are going on right now, and a great power of the budget hearings and a great power of the council is the people behind you. When your council member communicates with their neighborhoods and their constituents and finds out their priorities, then what they do is a negotiation with the mayor. The budget originates from the CAO and the mayor's office, and then it comes to the council for review. So right now, as the budget hearings are going on over the next several weeks, I encourage all of you to follow those. They're available online to listen to, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. You know, when I was just starting out in my career and I was working for the Bureau of Governmental Research, I would go sit in those budget hearings on behalf of the BGR, but also personally, and I would go and ask them questions, especially on the capital projects for this district. So that's, you know, a very short amount of time to answer a very complicated issue, but I would be happy to discuss it more afterwards.
Well, there's a couple of pieces. Number one, the city budget is about $1 billion, and as Mr. Tom alluded to, it's about 16% of the city budget that goes to the police, $160 million. If you have that much money going there, one of the things we learned from sewage and water board is that you must demand an accounting in public of what's going on. And I think there is nothing wrong with you saying there's $160 million going into a single department, asking the public to see item by item, line by line, how the money is being spent, so we all have a great recognition. The second piece, I think, of the answer is, how do you work with the mayor on it, is simply this. The city council has the control over the budget, and by that, I think you have the golden rule. He who has the gold makes the rules. And so the city council ought to be responsible for working with the next mister or madam mayor, but demanding that what they need in response times and accounting and accountability is forthcoming so that the budget gets passed in time and fashion.
I think as far as response times, if we get these community programs in place like I would like to do, get these offices out of their cars on a lot of cases, that immediately not only reduces response time, it reduces crime overall. So that's how I would deal with the response time issue. As far as the budget, we're paying. I believe 63% of our budget to public safety, yet we're fighting all these issues about public safety. What we really need to do is we really need to get the council in front of the people. And by that, what I mean is, these meetings are held during the day, when most of us are at work. So if we have some nighttime meetings held, or twice a day meetings held, why not work a little overtime? You're getting paid. You get paid. We get the people in front of the City Council, a lot more voices get heard and a lot more things get done. When I'm getting my next step by my constituents, I'm going to make sure that I get their job done and that's what I'm hired for.